We have, if followed, we thank the city of living, guide us this evening as we make our decisions. Christ, amen.
Amen.
Okay, this is the regular meeting of the Noonan City Council on November 22nd, 2022. You have the minutes for the regular meeting, November 8th, 2022, before you, I entertain a motion.
I so moved second.
Motion is second, we adopt the minutes from November 8th, 2022, as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried. Before we get into these appointments, I'd like to ask Ms. Jenkins to introduce members of the Noonan Youth Council who are here this evening.
Tonight, we have with us the Noonan Youth Council members who are attending their required meeting for the school year. Belinda Ramirez Ocampo, senior, East Cowida High, please stand. Alex Allen, sophomore, Northgate. Rico Lane, junior, East Cowida. Mary Louise Griffiths, sophomore, Central. Emma Kayler, sophomore, Northgate. Thank you for attending.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here tonight. I would also like to introduce at this time, we have a scout, a boy scout with us tonight, Weber Bean, Weber, if you'll stand and be recognized, we appreciate you being here tonight. He is a member of Troop 47 with Central Baptist Church, at Central Baptist Church. Our chief actually has a couple of gifts for you this evening. He is here in attendance and is, this is a requirement for his communications badge, so welcome, glad you're here, chief.
Mr. Bean.
Good luck on your road to Eagle.
Come up here.
The embarrassment's not over yet.
For our appreciation for you being here today, we're going to present you one of our challenge coins and one of our Noonan Police Fund baseballs.
Okay, so let's go into the appointments. The first one is Cultural Arts Commission, a three-year term, Mr. Gian.
Next meeting, please.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next is mine, Vida Brooks, I'm sorry.
Second.
All right, motion is second, to appoint Vida Brooks to the Farmer Street Cemetery Commission for a three-year term. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, thank you. The next is also an appointment to Farmer Street Cemetery, Mr. Gian.
Yes, I'd like to nominate John Pulicar.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, thank you. The next is Parks Commission, three-year term, Mr. Cricco.
I place on the next agenda, please.
All right, thank you. The next is tree commission, also Mr. Cricco.
Next agenda as well, please.
All right, thank you. Mr. Alexander, tree commission.
Next agenda, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Gian.
Next agenda, please.
All right, thank you. Okay, so that ends those appointments. We also have an annual report tonight from the Noonan Planning Commission, Mr. Smith is here. How are you, sir? If you'll just state your name for the record.
Yeah, Proctor Smith. Good evening, mayor and council. I am Proctor Smith, I'm the current chairman for the Planning Commission for the city of Noonan, and I'm here to give our annual report tonight. Next slide, please. For those who are not familiar with the Planning Commission and what we do, we are a seven-member board that is appointed by the city council to three-year terms. The current members include myself as chairman, Chris Hunt as vice chairman, Alton West, Clay McIntyre, Fred Hamlin, Bob Coggan, and Joe Crane, Jr. The tenure on the board currently ranges from around three years to somewhere around 24 years plus, I lose track of time at some point. But we've got a great, great group of volunteers on the board. It's been a pleasure to serve with each one of them, and I think I mentioned this last time, but it bears repeating, that we greatly appreciate the care that the council gives in making those appointments, it makes a big difference in the job we do, and we really appreciate it. Next slide, please. So, just some of the responsibilities and duties of the Planning Commission. We are responsible for making recommendations on rezonings and annexations, as well as text amendments to the zoning ordinance. Those recommendations are forwarded to city council where a final determination is made. We are responsible for approving and denying special exceptions and variance requests in the planned developments. Now, planned developments are those developments such as Summer Grove, Avery Park, Steelwood Farms, and Calumet. Normally, variance requests and special exceptions are heard by the Board of Zoning and Appeals, but because the Planning Commission was involved early on with the crafting of that early PD ordinance, the city felt inappropriate that we handle those specific items for the PDs. We're also involved with approving the certificates of appropriateness in our downtown design and the historic residential overlay districts. Those districts, you have some requirements. Anytime that you're going to be making modifications to the exterior structures, you have to go in front of the Planning Commission for something that's called a certificate of appropriateness, where we basically look at what's being proposed and just make sure that it's consistent with the overall architecture, the overall character of the area that it's being proposed for. We're also responsible for approving any design variations in the quality development corridor and the building exterior quality design overlays. These are basically overlays that go over our commercial corridors, and in those commercial corridors, we dictate the type of building materials that has to be used. There are requirements also in those ordinances for landscaping and screening, things of that nature, but as it relates to the variations, sometimes a developer might come in and request to use a material that's not prohibited by the ordinance, but it's not specifically allowed. So we'll look at that and make a determination if that's appropriate for that particular project. Next slide. So, as you can see, this pie chart here is a breakdown of the applications that we saw. It was a busy year for Planning Commission this year, there were a total of, I think we had a total of 27 applications. Just by way of comparison, I think we had 15 applications this time last year, so almost double. You can see from that pie chart, the largest area are rezonings. Of those 13 rezonings, the majority of those were residential in nature, either going from, request to go from commercial to a high-density type residential, or from a low-density residential to higher-density residential. We also had seven certificates of appropriateness, most of those are in the downtown district. We did have just a couple in some of our residential areas, four annexation requests, and then also one each of variance, text amendments, and special exceptions, those were pretty well in line with others. But the big-ticket items, the rezonings, COAs and annexations, an uptick in those. Next slide. So this is just a bar chart where we, where you can kind of compare for each one of those application types, how it compares with the previous years. On the rezonings, you have 13 for this year, compare that with two rezonings for the previous year. If you look at, you know, a five-year average, you're averaging about seven rezonings a year. So for this year, you're almost double what would be typical, and six times what we saw in the previous year. So, a lot going on in the city. COAs were pretty, pretty much in line, the certificates of appropriateness, an uptick a little bit in the annexation request, everything else pretty typical for what we would see. Next slide. So just sort of looking at the current trends, things that we're starting to see more and more of, we've begun to see requests for the repurposing of cargo containers. You know, that started with the, the Snow's flavored shaved ice little project in downtown, and he was very successful with that. And he later requested to add a second location in the commercial component of Summer Grove. That, that location was approved by the city, and we've had additional requests. So, staff has, I believe, just completed a draft of the ordinance for dealing with, looking at cargo containers. I believe that is actually on the Planning Commission's agenda for December, so we'll be taking a look at that. As I mentioned before, a lot of requests for the rezonings for things such as townhomes, multifamily projects, planned development, mixed-use developments. One of the things that was identified, referenced in the recent revision to the comp plan was this missing middle component, it's a kind of, it's really not a zoning classification, but just sort of a general description of a type of housing. And it basically defines it as a medium-density residential, four to seven units per acre, allowing for a variety of housing products, including single-family, duplexes, triplexes, quadriplexes, cottage homes, and smaller apartment buildings. So essentially, you're targeting things that are more dense than the traditional RS-15, which is our, our kind of traditional single-family home, but less dense than the RML, the multifamily designation. So, one of the things that we probably want to look at is, is trying to define that maybe a little bit better, we're starting to see some requests for people targeting those areas where the future land use map does identify those properties as missing middle, and it would probably be more helpful to have a little more specificity about what we're looking for when we look at those applications. And again, we continue to see the certificates of appropriateness for renovations and new construction primarily in the downtown area. And that looks to be, that's going to be ongoing, especially with the Cobble Tanks mixed-use site, that's just going to be an engine of more activity in the downtown area, so that looks to be something ongoing for some time now. Next slide. Just, just some areas for discussion that the Planning Commission has on the radar for the horizon, just, there's been some talk about taking a look at some minimum housing standards for rezoning and annexation requests, especially for rezonings involving more dense projects, the thinking being that as density increases, standards could increase as well possibly. All this keeping in mind the need to maintain a affordability of housing, as you raise standards of affordability, those tend to be opposing forces sometimes, so that's a balancing act that we have to be aware of. Parking, if you probably, in our downtown area, if you read the minutes for this report for the last 10 years, there would probably be a mention of parking in downtown, you know, our downtown is a popular area, the popularity continues to grow, and that puts a strain on parking. So just looking, looking at things, especially as we have infill projects similar to the project here on Lagrange Street, where Bynell is going to be building their office headquarters, you know, that project did provide parking, but as the ordinance currently sits, there was not a requirement to do so. So, we just want to be sure that if somebody's coming in, they're adding to the parking demands of the city, that we don't want to make a difficult situation worse. Possibly looking at establishing minimum percentages for uses within mixed developments, we've, the mixed development is kind of the next iteration of what the planned development was originally, and just on a smaller scale, it's basically this idea of, rather than having to take a piece of property and cut it up into multiple conventional zoning designations, we're allowing you to take a piece of property and call it a mixed use, and that mixed use allows for flexibility. But, you know, we've had some projects that come in and it's, you're overweighted in one particular area, especially as it relates to the multifamily component. So maybe looking at ways to not necessarily establish hard caps on densities, but maybe look at it from ratios as it relates, you know, so much residential as it relates to so much commercial, so you're getting a nice balance on, on those products. And finally, just trying to find the balance between single-family and multifamily development. You're just getting more and more push for density, and density is not necessarily a bad thing in and of itself, if you're putting it in areas where you already have the infrastructure to, to deal with it. But we just want to be sure that going forward, I think that the city commissioned a housing study, maybe around 2019, and if I'm not mistaken, it, based on projected population growth, it estimated that the city needed to add, I believe it was all, just shy of 800 housing units every year for the next 20 years to meet projected population. What, you know, how, what should that look like? What percentage should be of each type of housing product? You're gonna, you're gonna need some multifamily, you're gonna need some townhouse condominiums, but how much of that should you have relative to your other housing inventory? So, all of these are things that are on the radar of the Planning Commission. It looks to be another busy year moving forward, but we appreciate the support that the council gives the Planning Commission, and I'd be glad to try to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
I do. Thank you for this very thorough report, I appreciate the forethought that you all are giving to how we deal with growth in our community. Have you all considered that, and this may also be for staff, is this the body that's going to generate that annexation plan we talked about in our retreat?
Staff is currently doing research right now on annexation plans, processes of success, et cetera, and we're gathering all of that data, and we are going to be reporting back to this body first.
Okay.
Because it's an action item that came out of the retreat, so yes, we're in the process of gathering that data to report back.
Okay. And is the Planning Commission also looking at, and you answered the question about duplexes, but minimum square footage requirements and how that's affecting affordability as well?
Yeah, I think that minimum square footage definitely is something that we need to look at. You know, the affordability issue, you just, you've got the perfect storm as it relates to affordability right now. You know, the cost of construction, labor, materials, all the elements that go into that have escalated so much faster than wages have escalated, that, you know, you're pushing more people out of the homebuyers market and then into the rental market. Well, what does that do? That puts pressure on rental rates, and so, now you've got a situation where rental rates are getting to the point where you don't, you're, you don't have affordability in a lot of rental situations, and so you definitely don't want, you want your workforce to be able to live where they work, but, you know, some of that is easing off, some of those pricing, you're seeing certainly a plateau of the escalation, and, and home prices are beginning to come down. Will they give back all that, all that they gain? Not likely, unless something dramatic happens in the economy, but the square footage is just one way of tackling the affordability, and it's not all going to be handled through zoning, you just can't, if you eliminated all the fees associated with the zoning, with, with the cost of construction and development, you're not going to completely get there only by zoning, so it's going to have to be other things brought in to...
But it is an element.
It is one certain element, yes.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate, Mr. Alexander?
I want to compliment Mr. Smith, I served with him on the Planning Commission over 20 years ago, and I thank you for serving for 24-plus years, and he does a super job running the meetings in a very efficient manner, and thank you for serving our community. Well done.
Yeah, thank you, we appreciate the hard work of the chairman, of course, and all the members of the Planning Commission, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, the next item on the agenda then this evening is, Mr. Phillips, do you have anything?
I do.
I don't, I don't have anything this evening. I want to remind the council that we sent out an amended agenda, and if you're looking at your, your electronic devices, you're good, if you're looking at the book, you need to close the book and pick up the agenda that was provided for you in front of you, because there are a couple of things we're coming up on that were in that amended agenda. Everybody good?
Yep.
Okay, all right, good. So, we'll go into that, I don't have anything today. New business, consideration of the holiday pay resolution, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we adopt as presented, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The next two items are consideration of BA power cell of excess capacity to the city of Noonan on behalf of the city of Marietta. You've seen these before, are there any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
Motion is second, we approve as presented, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The next one is very similar, except it's on behalf of the city of Sandersville. Your motion?
Second.
Motion is second, we approve as presented, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you. The next is a public information session, not a public hearing, on the city of Noonan municipal voting districts. Mr. Phillips has stood up, and he's going to have a brief summary of what the map is over to our left or his right.
Yeah, I think the first thing that I want to reiterate is that this is a process that we go through after the release of the census data every 10 years. The reason we go through the process to review our, our council districts is to make sure that we have compliance with the Voting Rights Act. The main thing that we first of all look at when we look at our current voting districts is, are we still one person, one vote? Do we have proportionate population balance in each of the three districts? And the answer to that situation, in our particular situation, was no, we did not. District one had a little bit of growth, district two had the majority of the growth, district three, which was part of Councilman Jenkins and Councilman Alexander's district, actually lost a little bit of population, so hence, we had to go through the process to rebalance for that one-person-one-vote criteria. The second criteria that we primarily look at is, we have a majority-minority district in the city of Noonan, again, that is district number three, and we look at ways in which we can maintain the strength of that majority-minority district. So what we did in this particular case, district one, which is Councilmember Corto and Councilmember Gian, really didn't have to be changed much, it kind of fell right in line with the parameters, and if you look at the boundaries between the existing and the proposed, they are very, very similar. So what we had to do, we had to take away population from district two, Councilmember Shell and Councilmember DeBose, and actually give it to Councilmember Alexander and Councilwoman Jenkins in, in their district, while at the same time, trying our best to balance the minority-majority strength of the district. After some effort and great cooperation from this body, we have a proposed set of maps that we have been going to the public. This is our fourth public information session, the first three were held out in the community, we had one in each side of the council districts, the proposed council districts. So far, we've had about 20 people show up to those input sessions, this is our fourth. So tonight, you'll be providing the opportunity to people to ask questions or to give input on the maps. After tonight, they're still welcome to come to City Hall, these are on display, talk to us, provide input, all leading up to, we will have a final advertised, duly advertised public hearing in front of this body before final adoption of the maps.
So, this is your opportunity, if you came to this meeting this evening, to have input on the city of Noonan municipal voting districts, to come up and address us and share your opinion and state your name for the record. Everyone is here for a different item, we will move, we will move on to those items.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Phillips, we appreciate that. The next item is the presentation of external requests for funds under the ARPA. Mr. Moody, how are you?
I'm doing good, Mr. Mayor and Council. This may likely be the very last set of ARPA requests that come before you. So we have four requests tonight. The first is from Able to Serve, it's under the other public health category for $190,000. This program seeks to provide a, a care program for adults with disabilities, seeking primarily to purchase a vehicle for those programs.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the Able to Serve request, item number one under the ARPA funds for this evening, any discussion?
I have a couple of questions, and as I'm reading through this, it looks like it's strictly just for a larger bus and two drivers to cover for two years?
Correct. That's, that's exactly how I interpret the, the application to read. For ARPA purposes, there is no section against hiring staff, as it's primarily intended to provide that program. So as long as the, as long as the request serves the purposes of making sure that program can be administered correctly, there's, it perfectly fits in the ARPA program.
Okay. My second question was, I didn't see this addressed anywhere, and I don't know if anybody from this organization is here, but then, after the ARPA funding, then what? What's the plan? Again, kind of one of those things where you purchased the vehicle, which is great, but you're only having the drivers for those, that short amount of time, now what's the follow-up plan?
Well, the two...
Ma'am, we appreciate you being here tonight, if you'll state your name for the record.
My name's Lori Whitney, and I am currently running Able to Serve, two businesses hoping forward. We are currently running, and the staff that I asked, requested, one would be a driver, probably, and the other would be an additional staff person. would be an additional staff person. The problem I have right now is so many don't have transportation to get to my program. I, I feel like the bus and additional staff would make the program be able to grow to where it would be completely self-sufficient. It's growing already. So the further we go in, because there isn't anything else for them, especially in the evening times, because I just started that.
Yeah, it looks like a very worthwhile program. I just wanted to make sure you had a follow on plan.
Yes, yeah. It's, this is.
Part of this.
Right. This is just to get us established enough that we can grow. Because right now, it's just me. I'm the only staff and I can't grow. So.
Thank you.
I have a question as well, working. It says you move to, moving to 55 Savannah Street in October. Has that happened? And where are they housed?
We, we are doing the night program on Tuesday nights at 55 Savannah Street. And the day program probably won't move until January. I had hoped to get enough clients that I could add another staff person. Right now, with me being the only staff, it's not a good idea to be in a building by ourselves.
Excuse me, Representative Councilwoman Jenkins, if I can add to that. So 55 Savannah, as you all know, is the Howard Warner Community Complex. So the office, one of the offices rooms in the first floor that was vacated by a previous tenant is being used by this outfit during the time that she just stated.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, I do have a motion, a second to approve on the first Able to Serve. Any other questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. The second item.
The second item is from Keith Ross Insurance. This is under the Small Business Losses Program that was staffed by the council. This request is for $75,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve as presented. Any discussion or questions?
I do. It talks about $75,000 in order to, the impact is to hire citizens. Is this to hire additional staff? Or is this just basically keeping the, the rate, the same staff?
From the, from the, what the application reads as, it will, it seems to be hiring additional staff. One of the allowances again in the ARPA program on top of paying the payroll and the costs associated to that also includes hiring additional staff members to return back to pre-pandemic or advance past.
And again, I don't know if anybody's here from this business, but my follow on question is, okay, so then after the ARPA funding is over, then what's the plan? I mean, if you, it's nice to hire folks. To then, to kind of, to then what? So, thank you.
Hey, good evening, Keith Ross. Keith Ross Insurance. Been in the county for 17 years as an insurance agent owner. Yeah, I had at one time, three full-time staff. I'm down to one. So my, my goal is to get back to where I was before, to grow my business and to employ people in the county or in the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Ross. Okay, I have a motion, second on number two. Any other questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Number three.
All right. The third is from Hope Global Initiative. This will go in the Economic Impact Assistance Other category. The request has been amended to $136,316.00. This will encompass a mentoring program that will seek to reinforce positive behaviors through incentives to disadvantaged youth. This amended application will remove the housing program that was included in it. The categories didn't work quite well together. It would require two different applications.
All right. Is there a motion only amended?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I had a question again. I, because I saw all the, you know, their proposed timeline included, included a very, quite a vast and varied array of programs. So they're taking out all of the home rebuilds and repairs from this program?
Correct, correct.
So they're amending down $136,000 down to the $136,000.
Correct.
Okay. So again, I don't know if somebody's here from that group. But again, I'm just kind of concerned that, you know, once, once the money's spent and is to increase the number of field trips, to increase the number of students, to increase all this stuff, at the end of the programming, then what?
Yes, sir. My name is Luke Ayers. I'm the president of Hope Global Initiative. One of the reasons we took out the amended is waiting on the process and learning through what ARPA was with Andrew. And currently, the process is we are funding our mentor program with our additional staff and volunteers. And we will continue to do that. The ARPA funds are going to jumpstart to be able to bring on our part-time interns who have now graduated college to become full-time. And then once that happens, most of the, the heavy lift of the mentorship program is going to be liaised with volunteer community members to where they're going to be the ones mentoring the students. And then after the funding of the ARPA is used up, we will start day one, when the program starts, funding for continuing on 25, 26, and beyond that.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions before I call the question? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Okay, number four.
All right. The fourth and final request is from the Noonan Times Herald. This will also go in the Economic Impact Assistance category other. And it is for $72,901.92. This will allow the Times Herald to improve access to local news through website improvements and also new engagement opportunities.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion, a second to approve as presented. Any questions?
Yep. I guess I'm not quite understanding this one. It was a little odd. Because they want to expand their internet access. It sounds like mostly, you know, their online stuff. But according to, one of their goals was to improve access to critical local news for the entire community and increasing resident engagement, especially in the sent qualified census tracts. How exactly does that improve community access? I mean, they plan on using this to lower the rates to make it more accessible? Or are they planning on making, in the qualified census tracts, making it free? I mean, how does, how's this actually helping the citizens, the residents of Noonan?
Hey, I'm Beth Neely. I'm the co-publisher of the Noonan Times Herald. Thanks for having us up here. So to answer your question, there's many ways to access local news. And one of the ways that this grant would help us move forward with that is by upgrading our internet platform to include SMS messaging and geo-fencing with Google and Meta. So what you can do is people who don't necessarily have reliable internet connections or access to, say, four quarters to buy a newspaper, they can get, they can sign up for free text messages that will go to their flip phones, if they have a flip phone. They can go to their, their wireless phone. You know, a lot of our homeless residents don't have internet connection, but they have a cellphone. So instances where we've got the Nest that opens on cold nights, you may not know about it because you've had your laptop open, but you could get a text alert from the Noonan Times Herald letting you know that it's going to be chilly tonight. Head over to First Avenue.
So they'll be able to register with y'all? Or is that part of the geo-fencing when you're in a certain area that every phone will get a text message?
It's an opt-in type situation. We're not going to flood everybody just basically with geo-fencing. I think that's a little Big Brother-ish even for us.
Yeah, okay. Because I know, you know, to get any, any of the content, you have to have subscription. So I was just trying, like, how does this work for the, for folks that can't afford to get a subscription, that don't, don't take a subscription?
Well, that's the nice thing about this platform is it offers multiple, multiple ways to access the news at different pay grades.
Okay. So it'd be like basically just a text saying, the Nest is open now, but it wouldn't be a whole article?
Exactly.
Okay. So then my follow on question, same ahead for everybody. After this, kind of then what? Does, is this a set of a platform that's long-term and sustaining?
It is. The nice thing about this platform, we've done a lot of research through the Georgia Press Association. And most newspapers our size and smaller, they have relied since the beginning of the internet. I know that sounds weird, but y'all, it's pretty new, all things considered. We've been around for almost 160 years. It all began in-house. Our IT director built our website from scratch. It's very one-of-a-kind, unique code. And since its inception, it has slowly deteriorated to the point where it's not sustainable. So using the Georgia Press Association's network and across, and the National Newspaper Association, we reached out to other newspapers comparable in size to ours and found the most comparable platform that would sustain a newspaper that gave the most viable options to the most types of subscribers. Town News is the network that we chose and, or the platform that we chose, I'm sorry. And they have proven to be adaptable and accessible and very user-friendly. So moving forward, this grant would get us up and going and it becomes self-sustaining after the, the first couple of years.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate you being here, ma'am.
Well, I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. Anyone else? Another question or comment? I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moody. Okay, the next item on the agenda this evening is one of those off-agenda items. You have an extra packet here before you. This is the 34 Wall Street demolition request. Lee, this is where we had the fire, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is a request to demolish the building that did have a fire. It's located at 34 Wall Street. And it is an old substation that's been used off and on throughout the years. It's a kind of a storage area. But since we've gotten new buildings and new storage buildings in our, in our other departments, it's kind of been not being used. And, and it did have a fire the other, of the night, the day. And we do, would like to demolish the building and mainly to keep it from catching fire again, as poses a hazard to the fire officials that go in there and fight the fires. And the building is of no use. It's very much deteriorated, as you can see from my report. And we would like to have it demolished.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. We approve that the request to demolish the structure at 34 Wall Street. Any discussion or other questions?
One question, Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips, what do we plan on doing with this property after that building comes down? Is there any other buildings on that property?
No, it's, it's the only building on, on the property. And as Mr. Stevens said, we were using it for some limited storage, but it's.
Right.
Dirt floors. It, it just wasn't fit for any type of real habitation. And part of the upper mezzanine had fallen down. And unfortunately, the lot's even not real great for storage because making the turns on the Wall Street, it's very difficult with our trucks. I mean, we'd just like to beautify it. And I don't know, I really don't have an answer. Maybe it's something this body could, could discuss at a later date. But I think we just got a, a safety issue and a hazard there that we need to get it down and then determine what we want to do with the property, if anything.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right. We have a motion, second. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you.
Thank you and happy holidays.
The next item on the agenda tonight under unfinished business, this is consideration of second extension for distilled spirits package store licenses. This is a location at 109 Bull's Borough Drive. Mr. Phillips, do you have anything on this before we call on that?
Yeah.
Okay. You'll state your name again for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Rocky Singh.
Brian Greedy.
And Shane Hamilton.
And we're just here to, you know, give you guys an update in, in hopes of an extension for this. So we've got funding in place with United Community Bank. The point of contact would be Bill Geisling. He's the senior vice president there. So, and we also were able to recently, you know, pick a contractor. And if you have any questions for them, they're here. And then Brian Greedy can give you an update on, you know, the project as well.
As far as the project goes, we, we've turned drawings in to meet a deadline, lacking a metal building, because we just didn't have enough time to pull off getting engineering. Since then, because of some economic changes and how we're doing it, we've changed the building and we're in process waiting on Big B to provide us the engineering drawings so that we can turn them in for another perm, for the final permit. Other than that, we've awarded Lickdy the contract to build the building. They pulled demo permit today. And if you allow this to go forward Monday, there'll be a dumpster there and a beehive of activity going on. So we've also have approved signage that we've had designed. And if we can use the existing elevated lighted sign at the road, we can get a jump on marketing by going ahead and making the signs with the coming soon. And for the next six months or so, people will know what's going in there.
Okay. You were doing fine until we got to the sign thing?
Uh-uh.
Because that's, that's, for me, I'm not sure about how long a sign can stay vacant.
Well, that's, that's why I was asking.
Is there a?
Not on signs.
Not on signs. So you're, they're good to go?
If you, if the can is still up.
Can's still up.
Okay.
The can is still up.
Okay.
That's a sacred piece of ground right now.
So you're, so you're still doing fine?
Okay, okay.
It's only if the tire structure is.
You said, you know, six months or so. What's the estimated timeframe to finish and actually open?
I'll defer that to him as far as time. You know, what, I know that the last meeting, and we've lost a month since then, the other two buildings got a, I think, a nine-month extension. Obviously, we'd love to have that same extension, but we're going to have to defer to you guys and to the contractor on how we move forward and what that timeframe looks like. So let Shane kind of talk about timeframe.
Shane Hamilton, what do you think?
Honestly, as he said, eight to nine months from start to finish, preferably with, you know, an evaluation, you know, at some point for any type of time delays or anything on, you know, procurement of materials or anything that we may run into a delay on.
Railroad strike, some.
Yeah, who knows nowadays? Yeah.
Something like that. Yeah, we get it. Okay. So is there a motion on?
I'd like to make a motion for, somebody has their hand up for something?
I apologize. I actually like to speak on this issue. I don't know if I should ask to speak before we make a motion or afterwards.
Well, you would need to come up before. Are, are you related to the group?
I'm related in that I'm Andrew Williams. I'm a resident of the Bulls Borough, across in housing development that is in walking distance of this particular establishment. I know that I've probably not met the time requirement to bring forth a disagreement in its existence. However, when I listen to the bringing of this particular facility to its location, I hear rushed construction. I hear metal building. I hear extension of nine months. I don't hear anything that tells me I'm going to put something here near a housing development and children and families that is going to bring anything uplifting to a place where I bought a home several years ago. So I'd like to hear more of why, what this extension will do to make this more palatable for the people that live there. And also, I'd like to know if there's consideration from the council and how close we're allowing these type establishments to be built near housing developments. Because the other, one of the other two locations for sure is not within any distance of a, of a housing development. This one is within walking distance. So my concern there, again, I don't know if I'm out of place in, in my authoritiness in having that discussion, but I'm wondering if those things have been considered. Thank you for your time.
When we went through the process of deciding where the locations could be, we took those elements into consideration, the proximity to residential and that type of thing. As far as the quality of the product that's going to be built there, it's, it's being, it is in a quality corridor district. And those regulations will be imposed on the construction site and the, and the building itself. And that'll come through our building department. So those things are in place. Let me just say, I've not seen the plans, but it has got to look better than what you see every day when you drive up to your subdivision.
Respectfully, Mayor, there are case studies, particularly with the type of establishments that these gentlemen are building. And I'm not against liquor stores. Let me make that very clear. But there are case studies that exist that talk about the level of additional activity that comes with those establishments. So I would rather see a dilapidated building now as opposed to seeing crime and other issues that are associated with it later. If the board would be willing to, I would like the opportunity to take 30 days or so to prevent, to present such case studies for your consideration, if that would be considered. to prevent, to present such case studies for your consideration, if that would be considered.
I, I'm not gonna agree to that. Is anyone on the council who'd like to make that motion?
We went through the process, and that's the commercial area. And your house was there after that commercial area was there. And it has, it's subject to change. It could have been something else at times. But it's still, it's been through an extensive process, distance-wise, all the different elements of it. And like they said, this building will look better than we had and conform with our current standards that weren't necessarily in place when that was built.
Sir, you placed signs up that have zoning requests or discussions on that quite a bit. We had the zoning presentation earlier, understanding of that. But at what point, without the noon in the times here, and thank you for your work as well, without them reporting that such a building was coming, we in the subdivision had no idea. So, our problem, absolutely, we'll deal and get better on that as far as being involved and informed. But this idea that it's over, okay, if that's the way we will do things, then I'm very disappointed in how we move forward as a city.
Well, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you, then, gentlemen, in your town.
Thank you. Appicant? Is there a motion?
I wanted to make the motion for an extension for nine, for nine months and to fall in line with the other applicants.
Second.
All right. There's a motion to second for a nine-month extension of 109 Bullsborough Drive on the Distilled Spirits Package Store License location. Any discussion? All those in favor can keep my saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
The next is consideration of intergovernmental agreement between Coweta County for the 2023-2032 Local Option Sales Tax Distribution and the 2025 SPOS distribution. You were all involved in this conversation. The documents are before you. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. We agree to the, to the documents that are before us, the intergovernmental agreement of Coweta County on the 2023 through 2032 Local Option Sales Tax and the distribution of the 2025 SPOS distribution, if there in fact is such. You don't want to take anything for granted. So, I have a motion to second. Any discussion?
I just want to make sure. I know during the actual discussions, Mr. Phillips found, you know, made, the numbers didn't add up. These are the same numbers, everything adds up.
They are. They're absolutely correct.
Just making sure. Thank you.
All right. With that clarification, thank you. I'll call a question. All those in favor can keep my saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. The next item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing. This is a zoning ordinance text amendment, Articles 10 and 11, revising provisions pertaining to legal notification timeline and quasi-judicial actions such as variance, special exception appeals, and zoning administrators' applications requiring public hearings. Those changes are before you. Mr. Smith is also before you. How are you, sir?
Good evening. Well, yourself?
I'm good. Thank you.
Good. Good to hear. It's very self-explanatory, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. We have started this process the last three months in terms of informing applicants of the increased timeframe. So far, we've encountered no resistance or no, there's really not much else we can do. I mean, the state pretty much decided for us. Planning Commission did hear this item in October and recommended approval of it.
All right. This is a public hearing on the issue of text amendments for Articles 10 and 11. If you came to this meeting tonight to comment on the text amendments on Articles 10 and 11 of our zoning ordinance, please come forward at this time. This is your opportunity. That motion meets my expectations on this item. So, I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion on the issue.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. We adopt as presented.
This may need to accept the recommendation.
I move that we accept the recommendation.
Second.
Motion to second. We move, we accept the recommendation from the Planning Commission. And now, motion on the ordinance.
Aye, so moved.
Motion to second. We adopt the ordinance as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor can keep my saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, Mr. Smith, you're still up. This is a public hearing request, RZ 2022-11, Sprayberry Barbecue, 1.22 acres, located at 30 Amelie Jack Boulevard, tax parcel 975044013, requesting a change in conditions on previous annexation rezoning ordinance. This is consideration ordinance. This is a public hearing.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, this is previously, this property was annexed and subsequently zoned with conditions back in July of this year. The applicant has reached out to the city and asked us to consider changing one of those conditions, which has to do with the distance. The proposed billboard will be located from the property line. They're asking for a reduction of 25 feet from the federal interstate highway and from the adjoining property line for the new digital billboard they're proposing to construct on this property, which will replace an existing static billboard that's been on the site currently. This did go through the Planning Commission back in October. We held a public hearing. At the conclusion of that hearing, the Planning Commission recommended five to zero to consider this with a favorable recommendation. There was no public opposition at that time. This is the only condition out of the original July ordinance that they are seeking a change on. And if you have any other questions, be glad to answer them. But the applicant is available if you have any questions of him.
All right. Thank you. I'll ask at this time if there's anyone here who would like to come forward to speak in opposition or an approval of the rezoning request from Sprayberry's Barbecue on a parcel located at 30 Amelie Jack Boulevard, 1.22 acre parcel. Anyone would like to come forward? Seeing no one come forward, I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time, and I'll ask for a motion to approve the recommendation from the Planning Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second to approve the recommendation from the Planning Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor can keep my saying aye. Any other questions on the recommendation?
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. All those in favor can keep my saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Is there a motion to approve the zoning?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second, Mr. Hamilton.
Yes. You said it's a reduction of 25 feet?
Down to 25 feet.
Down to 25 feet. From what?
From 65 to 25 along the interstate. And I think from 40 to 25 to the adjoining property owner.
Okay. Is this the last time they're gonna come back? I mean, it's been multiple.
I like that. Yeah, that's the question best for the applicant.
I'm Donald Sprayberry.
Yes, this is the last time. It was a mistake on our part.
Mr. Sprayberry, that was the right answer.
I know that.
Well, Mr. Sprayberry, while you're up, I have another question for you.
Sure.
Is this gonna be a static billboard or is this one of those electronic ones?
Electronic. One side's electronic and one side will be static.
Okay. And this is maybe a question for Dean. I'm not sure. I'm looking at the pictures and, you know, I know they're kind of putting it there to kind of make it look as best as possible. Moving, moving that billboard up, and I don't know if it's one of those ones that's on the arm that sticks out even further. So, the post is here, but it actually sticks out even further. And if that vegetation is removed, you know, when time trees die and stuff like that, is this gonna be like a Union City eyesore? You know, when you're just driving, you see a big old billboard right there. It's just, it's just an eyesore. Right now, it'd be kind of conspicuous. It's tucked into the, to the tree line there. And it looks, you know, you can see it over the tree line, but it's not just right in your face.
I think all billboards.
I just wanna make sure that, you know, if that vegetation is removed.
Yeah, if you want to answer, I mean, we...
Yeah. Couple of quick items about that. Now, the maximum height is 65 feet for any billboard built currently in the city, and no more than 400 square feet. And there is a condition or ordinance that says you're responsible for the ongoing maintenance of a sign. For electronic signs, there's even an additional requirement that you had to give a 24-hour contact in the event that something is reported where the sign goes askew. That's to turn it off and address those issues. If it starts to, like, if the LED components go bad, it starts projecting light onto the interstate traffic, we have a mechanism to deal with that. It's not gonna be that much closer than some of the other ones. There's one next to La Ha Seinda or La Ha, whatever it's called now. It's an older billboard. It was converted. And then, when GDOT came along and took additional right-of-way for their off-ramps, they ended up decreasing the distance from that sign to the road. This'll be a little bit further away than that sign currently is. So, we think with our...
Is this the same size sign as that one?
It won't be as tall.
Okay.
It'd be about the same square footage, but it won't be as tall. And it won't be as tall as some of the other ones you have behind Academy. And I think the closest, it may be close in height to the one that's behind the gas station near Hampton Inn. So, there are methods and there's regulations in place to hope to prevent it from becoming an eyesore. Certainly, in the event that it's not maintained and well cared for, the city has the ability to enforce regulations through code enforcement and through citation to come to court to address those issues.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Do have a motion to second to approve the ordinance as the rezoning is presented. Any discussion? Any other questions? All those in favor can keep my saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We move on. The next is a public hearing. This is a rezoning request that actually has a letter. This is item R before you from Joshua Harris for Southern Development, asking for an extension on the zoning application until our second meeting in January of next year, 2023. My question would be whether or not, Ms. Sears, I guess the legal question, open the public hearing and continue it or just take the item and move the entire item with opening the public hearing.
What did Ms. Donovan say?
Ms. Donovan?
Sorry, what did you say?
We didn't. Mr. Mayor, Ms. Donovan and I had this discussion about this particular thing as to whether or not counsel could postpone the public hearing to that day. All right. Except that new letters would need to go out.
Right. That's my point. We gotta re-advertise it, do all those things.
But if you opened the public hearing
Right.
tonight and then had a motion to continue it, that's approximately 60 days. All right. So, you would need to include in the motion an extension. Okay. What, if you recall, within our ordinance, it says that once it's filed, counsel will take action within 120 days. And I think we move out of that. So, if you want to open the public hearing and continue the public hearing, therefore, the new notices would not have to go out.
Correct.
But you would need to also include in the motion a waiver of your own 120-day limit.
Okay. By show...
Because what it says is, I think what it says is, if you don't take action with 120 days, it's denied. It's automatically denied. So, we don't want to get caught in that.
By show of hands, is anyone here tonight to speak for or against? You don't have to state your, your position, but for or against item R, which is the rezoning at 420 Jefferson? All right. So, my, my concern is that if we open the public hearing and continue it and don't send out those notices, and then we don't have, we don't have the meeting tonight, and then we have it in January, somebody's not, somebody's gonna think we had it tonight and it's over rather than in January. So, I'd rather err on the side of re-notifying the public.
You can include that in the motion also.
And we are happy to re-notify the public, put up signs and do everything that we require for the public hearing process.
All right. Then, then I would like, I'm gonna open the public hearing on 420 Jefferson Street and, and ask for a motion to continue it to the January 20... I'm sorry, somebody give me that date, please. January, I'm gonna talk very slowly while somebody is...
All right.
24?
Correct.
January 24th, 2023 meeting. The motion needs to include extending past the 120-day requirement. And it also needs to instruct staff to repost the property and resend the letters to the public so that the public understands that meeting is getting held that night. So, there's no confusion, Mayor.
So moved.
I'll make a motion that we... I'll make a motion we continue.
I already did it.
She did it. She, I have a motion.
I'll second Cynthia's motion.
I appreciate that very much. I have a motion to say, does anybody understand what we've done?
I, I would like to ask the question. Maybe it's inappropriate or appropriate. I'm not real sure. But for clarity, why are we extending again? Did you read why the request for the extension?
The customer requested.
You have a letter.
You just, just requesting for, just requesting?
No, sir. It's very possible the applicant may be amending his rezoning petition.
All right. That's what I was, not...
That's all.
I just wanted a little clarity. Thank you.
There's new information that he needs in order to finish that application
Right, okay.
in a different fashion.
Thank you.
It's not just convenience. Yeah.
Well, yeah, thanks.
Okay. So, I have a motion to second. Everybody understands the three items in the motion? I'll call the question. All those in favor can keep my saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much. This next item, Ms. Donovan, you're up.
So I stand here.
Is zoning request, RZ 2022-10 by Daniel Lickety on behalf of Morana Construction, Inc., 1.97 acres located at 170 Lagrange Street, tax parcel N 280048, from RS 15 suburban residential, single-family dwelling to medium density to RU 7 urban residential, single-family, high-density consideration of ordinance. Ms. Donovan?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Beatty. So, this site was, is the site of a six-unit apartment building that was destroyed by last year's tornado, as you may recall. The property is currently zoned RS 15. The applicant's requesting RU 7 zoning designation. As currently zoned, they can do two lots with single-family homes with minimum lot sizes of 15,000 square feet. The request is to subdivide this property into three lots with a minimum required lot size of 7,500 square feet. However, the applicant is showing lot sizes of 16,797 square feet, 12,492 square feet, and 12,959 square feet on the concept plan. Megan, if you can move one on that, which is shown up here. It should be noted that this concept plan does show that the lots as proposed will require a variance for lot width and street frontage from 75 feet to 65 feet, but all other dimensional requirements appear to be met. We have completed an assessment of the eight required standards. I'll go quick through those. Staff felt the proposed use would be suitable in view of zoning and development of adjacent nearby properties since the majority of the uses in the area are single-family homes. Primary zoning designation for the area is RS 15 with RU 7 zone property, which is what they're requesting, abutting the tract to the rear. As previously stated, we did have a six-unit apartment complex. The applicant is seeking to replace it with three single-family homes, which the staff believes would be more suitable. There would be no adverse impact on adjacent nearby property as three single-family homes would have less impact than the six units previously located on the site. In addition, the applicant has proffered proposed architectural renderings, and if you'll go into the next slide, Megan, please, that they're planning to use to complement the character of the historic neighborhood. Now, however, to ensure that that look is achieved, the Planning Commission has recommended requiring certificates of appropriateness, which Proctor discussed earlier, for all three homes, even if they're not gonna be included in the HRDO or Historic Residential Design Overlay District. Could it be used as currently zoned? Yes, it could. But only two houses could be built on the site. Would the project cause an excessive and burdensome use of public facilities? All the service providers have responded that they are able to address the needs of the development with the current equipment, manpower, and capacity. In terms of the comprehensive plan, future land use map shows this as built community, and single-family homes would be compatible with that designation. The applicant is requesting RU 7, which is primarily designated for single-family homes. Therefore, the request would be consistent with the purpose and intent of the proposed RU 7 zoning. Would the proposed use be supported by new or changing conditions not anticipated by the comprehensive plan? Again, it's built community, and it would be consistent with that. And there aren't any new changes that have been asked or sought in the last year or so. Staff does not feel the, or does feel the request shows a reasonable balance between the promotion of the public health, safety, morality, and general welfare and the right to unrestricted use of property. As previously stated, this tract was a six-unit apartment complex. They're all asking for two homes. That's one additional unit, or half the number of units that were previously located on this site. In addition, there's little to no impact on services. The existing drive will be repoured to allow the proposed houses to be accessed from the rear. The comprehensive fan, comprehensive plan again shows this as built community. So, that would be something that would be consistent with that. The landscape architect did review the request and asked the developer to incorporate the existing four crate myrtles that are on the site into the overall design, and the applicant was agreeable to that. So, staff does feel that this request reflects a reasonable balance. So, in summary, we found that this development met seven of the eight standards. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on October eleventh and voted unanimously to approve the rezoning with the following conditions. And that would be that the homes would be consistent with the character shown in the architectural renderings, provided as part of the rezoning application, and that certificates of appropriateness from the Planning Commission be required for each house. That the four existing crate myrtles will be incorporated into the overall design. That the driveway access will continue to be provided to the one seventy-four LaGrange Street property, which is the one next door, and that the lot width and frontage on the three lots will be reduced from seventy-five to sixty-five feet, as depicted on the concept plan. And that's the report of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. The applicant is here this evening, if they have anything to say, to come forward. Is that, is her report yet?
Shane Hamilton again. Really, just the main thing is, much like y'all were talking about with the trying to help the cost of living and the pricing on houses, basically benefit there. Overall, just want to keep the look of the area and kind of make it flow with what's there and take out the ISO that was there,
Sure.
which we've already taken care of.
We appreciate that. Okay, is anyone here in opposition? This is your opportunity to come forward and speak to the rezoning request at one seventy LaGrange Street. If there would be anyone who is in opposition. Does anyone on the council have any questions of that?
I do. What are your square footages that you're estimating these homes to be?
I'm going to have to refer back to her on that one.
So on the concept plan, the three houses are showing one is sixteen thousand, oh, that's lot size, sorry, sixteen thousand seven ninety-seven. I think what she's saying at the meeting was going to be around fifteen hundred?
I know it was to meet the minimum, basically the minimum requirement.
Which an RU seven would be the fifteen hundred square feet? But it may be there's larger than that.
Yeah. It was, we were, well, actually, we are actually open to larger, but meeting the minimum requirement.
Right, I would think you're going to wind up with a larger square footage there because the topography of that lot is going to be basement.
Possible basement or large crawl space.
One of two, okay. All right, so, no one in opposition, any other questions of that?
Yes, sir. There's that little side driveway, and it goes back to the back for access to everyone's parking. Who will be responsible for that driveway? Will it be all three owners or just the one?
And I'm throwing that out because down the road, it's, there's going to be all kinds of finger pointing, and some council members are going to get some phone calls.
Well, with it being a common drive, I guess honestly, we'd have to lay it out almost as a, you know.
If y'all could figure it out, I'm just throwing that out, it doesn't seem like it's-
When you get ready to close, is when you need to make sure.
Yeah, that's actually, it is a good point there, so I mean, in actuality, probably almost a little HOA.
I can pretty much guarantee you that no mortgage company in the world is going to make a loan on a house that does not have a driveway access.
Right.
That's legally recorded. So you're going to have to figure it out.
Yeah, and, yeah, so we can, we'll definitely take a look at that.
Thank you, okay, thank you. Any other question? All right, I'll close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion to accept report and recommendation from the Planning Commission.
So moved, second.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, then I'll ask for a motion to amend the zoning.
I'll make a motion to amend zoning.
Second.
Motion of second, we approved the zoning request for this property located at one seventy LaGrange. Any discussion?
Somebody put anything in there about the driveway, just to make sure that there isn't a big tangency about that at all?
I think that's, that's the homeowner.
I think, I think it's something we may need to consider here. I know there was probably a condition that it be one driveway, but as staff has been discussing this, I think one driveway is a concern for the future of those products. I know we don't want three curb cuts, but I think for sustainability of the homes as ownership, you may want to remove that, consider that being individual driveways. I'm simply afraid that the shared driveway, we know complaints all over town with shared driveways, that you may lead into a situation that is not sustainable for the builder or whoever's living in the house.
So staff, I think, what, go ahead, what is?
That's just staff's opinion, as we've discussed it internally.
I actually, my partner here was working on getting an answer to that while, while we were talking there.
Well, I agree with Mr. Phillips, I think although we don't want an additional, well, there's one curb cut now.
Maybe you can loop it or something.
And when you go up and down LaGrange Street, there's an abundance of driveway cuts. There's, every house has a driveway cut. And I don't, I think it ought to be the same as, as what we have there now. So I'm going to ask, who made the motion?
I did.
Okay, will you withdraw your motion?
Yes, I withdrawed my motion.
Well, we're talking about it, though.
Well, let me get a draw of the second. Okay, so we don't have a motion on this. Ms. Jenkins?
Yeah, you know, I'm looking at this because I'm, and I know these are placeholders, which is one of the reasons why I asked what the size of the house is going to be. Because if you start to try to do the, the curb cuts and bringing in the driveways, you're not going to have a whole lot of space with the small lots.
You're going to narrow the space on that line.
You are, and you're going to have a product that then has a different massing than some of the rest of the houses because the lots are smaller. So, you know, in situations like this, I've seen people use easements and then have some sort of, you know, clause that says you have to maintain your portion of what's on your property, which means this person at the top has more responsibility than everybody else. But, I mean, I'm, I, I don't have a strong opinion either way, I'm just trying to talk through this and think through it. But I'm like, if we have different, the curb cuts, I'm assuming that the driveways, the carriages were planning to be in the back of these, I don't know how far you are along in design. You know, I mean, this could be a shared thing, we have a, and I don't know, I'm not trying to get into Mr. Sears's place here, but the way I've seen it done in other places is you get either an easement or you do an association type thing where everybody puts in an escrow of some sort and pays out when it's needed. So, I mean.
I agree with Cynthia, I thought that was one of the good things about it. That way you don't have the driveway going straight into the house, which is all in the back, instead of being right on the street. And if you start changing that, you're going to have a problem. Because what is it, sixty-five feet wide?
Correct.
And that driveway is twelve, fourteen feet wide, whatever it is, and the house is going to be so many feet wide, you're going to have, you're back to almost the same problem, plus the topography of that thing, it drops way off if you take it to the back. Surely, something could be worked out where it's-
Actually, that was the answer that he got for me, is actually it's going to be treated as an HOA with maintenance for the common drive taken care of by the HOA.
Recorded at the courthouse, the whole deal.
And the square footage is the approximately twenty-five hundred with the plans that we're looking at.
Okay. All right, so would you?
I've got a quick question. Just looking really closely at this plan, as best I can look at it. Is there, is there any requirements for the driveway to have any setback from the corner of the house or the property line? Because it almost plays going over the property line. I mean, looking at the, I'm looking at the one drawing that you gave.
From what they've got on the drawing, it's actually the original entrance that was into the apartment complex using that same area.
Okay.
So then I'm just, I'm just again looking kind of forward, having three houses. Is the driveway cut and everything going to be wide enough to facilitate one car coming in, one car going out at the same time?
Correct.
So it's going to be a wide driveway?
Yeah, it'll have, yeah, it'll have the one wide drive taken care of by the homeowner's association.
So I think I want to just quickly clarify, just for me, I'm seeing on some document it says Lipti Brothers, and other thing says Morana, who's actually doing this?
Um, Morana.
Who?
Morana.
And what's the relationship there?
Um, both are Daniel Lipti. One is our custom home division, and one is the remodel and general.
So the Morana's the custom?
Correct.
Okay, zero motion.
Make a motion if we approve.
Second.
Motion of second, we approve, is presented. Any discussion of the questions?
That motion's with the stipulation that it's a HOA.
Of the homeowner's association.
Or something, yeah, for the driveway, okay.
Well, I guess so, I'm amending my motion to approve it with the, with the inclusion of homeowner's association.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried, thank you. We appreciate you being here this evening. The next is twenty-five Pencil Street owner updating request for extension. Murray, how are you, sir?
Well, Mr. Mayor and council, thank you. Yes, this property is a storm damaged property, it was last before you in August for, was approved for a ninety-day extension. That extension is coming to an end. They are requesting another ninety-day extension to complete. About ninety percent of the exterior work has been done, but they still have vast majority of the interior work done. The electrical contractor did pull electrical permits yesterday to begin the electrical rough ends and rewiring of the house, but they are asking for a ninety-day extension.
Zero motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, we grant the ninety-day extension on twenty-five Pencil Street. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried. The next is a public hearing, this time on thirty-three Ray Street. This public hearing is for a resolution to repair, demolish.
Yes, sir, this, this property has been on the building department's radar for quite some time. Actually, the previous owner, we had had several contacts with as far as property maintenance code violations. The property was sold last September, and the new owner started earlier this year doing some work, some renovation work and some demolition work. Unfortunately, no permits were pulled, so we had to put a stop work order on the job. Everything came to a stop. He was telling us that Mr. Jordan Davies is the current owner, and he was telling us that they was going to hire a new contractor, and it was going to clean up the lot, but nothing ever happened. And the last communication I had with him was that, he told me that in his words, the bank was no longer working with him, and the property was going back to the bank. So I believe it's going through foreclosure now. But the property, the way it sits, is a, it's an ISO, it's unsafe. It's a threat to public safe, health, health and safety in that neighborhood and that, that street. And we're asking for a forty-five, forty-five day resolution to repair, demolish.
This is a public hearing on this issue at thirty-three Ray Street. Is anyone in attendance tonight that would like to speak to the issue of thirty-three Ray Street? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Staff is asking for forty days, I'm going to ask for thirty, on a repair, demolish, demolition.
Have you had any contact with the homeowner?
Well, Mr. Davies, as I said, the last contact we had with him was he told me that the, the property was being foreclosed on, that he-
Oh, okay.
That's the reason I'm asking for thirty days.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, to keep in mind, we have to give notice to the lender.
I understand.
Is the exterior secured?
It, it is secured, but yes, it is, it is secured, it's-
Besides all the rubble outside?
Yes, right, there's mounds and mounds of debris, but the, yes, the property is secured.
And what's our minimum that we have to give? Just out of curiosity here? Or did you hear me? I, I was asking what the minimum, what's the minimum notification or number of days we have to work with?
Thirty days would be fair, then, yeah, yeah, that's what.
I'll make that motion for thirty days.
Make that, yeah, second.
Motion of second, thirty day, adopt a thirty day resolution of repair, demolish on thirty-three Ray Street. Is there any discussion?
I, I do, I'm trying to figure out, you know, we normally give forty-five days, so I'm trying to figure out why we'd want to move that much faster if it's already going to be foreclosed on, because maybe there's-
It goes into foreclosure, somebody buys it at the courthouse, and then we're back into this negative cycle of thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, one hundred and eighty days, and nothing gets done. How long's it been on our radar?
Since twenty eighteen.
Four years.
Four and a half.
I think the people on Ray Street have suffered enough.
Okay.
Have a motion of second for thirty days.
Can staff go by there and check to make sure that it is secure? You know, I, I just don't want someone going in there, next thing you know, that have an accident.
Yes, sir, we can.
Works the place.
Yes, sir, we can do that.
Someone gets hurt.
Sure, we can do that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
All right, I have a motion second, any other? All all the question, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried. The next is a public hearing on four West Gate Park Drive, resolution to repair, demolish, this is a public hearing, Mr. Murray.
Yes, sir, this property unfortunately suffered a very severe fire damage on August first. The property is pretty much a total loss. We, we did send notice to the owner, Mr. Willie Joe Smith, asking him to contact the building department, we gave him thirty days to secure the property, which it's, it's secured as best it can be, given the destruction, and, and to apply for his permits and let us know what his plans were as far as repairing or demolishing the structure. Unfortunately, we didn't hear back from him, so we are moving forward with the public hearing. The property is certainly fifty, greater than fifty percent of assessed value that damages to the house. The repair costs will be greater than fifty percent of the assessed value. We did hear from a contractor working for Mr. Smith late last week, who has applied for a demolition permit, so I believe that's the direction this is going. But I think Mr. Smith, is he here tonight? Yes, sir. Mr. Smith is here tonight, and I think he wanted to update council on where, where things stood with the property.
Mr. Smith, if you'll come forward, please. How are you tonight, sir?
Hello, right.
If you'll state your name for the record.
Yes, I want to, I want to rebuild again, I want to.
Okay, I'm sorry, would you state your name for the record, sir?
My name Willie Joe Smith.
Thank you, sir.
For West Gate Park Drive.
Uh huh.
And I'm here on behalf of trying to get my house rebuilt back. Headed contractor right here.
Yeah, my name is Oscar Palacios, I work for Dwight Park Contracting. Yeah, we tried to put a permit last week, and we got a half decision after today. They, I don't know.
I think they're waiting to prove the permit until the outcome of this meeting tonight.
Right, and that's a permit for demolition?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. All right, thank you, we appreciate that. Is there anyone else here that would like to come forward and speak to the issue of four West Gate Park Drive? I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for, Mr. Murray, have you got a recommendation?
We were asking for forty-five days, but I mean, do you think you can have it thirty days, you can have it?
Yeah, we can, so we can get it ready, we can get it done, yeah.
Thirty days?
All right, is there a motion for a thirty-day demolition?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second, is there a second?
Second.
Motion of second for a thirty-day demolition resolution on four West Gate Park Drive?
It's okay, it's okay, I'll third it.
I appreciate that. Any discussion?
I have a question for you, Mr. Smith, realistically, so this is to demolish it, you know, get rid of the structure that's there currently. Do you have a timeline for rebuilding? You know, is that possible with your insurance or whatever you have to?
He said he can do it in, what, two months?
Yeah, like, back in two months. Always depends, it's a, well, first step, you know, we go for demolition course. After that, we go find the area, foresee the walls, this, we can keep the same walls or we got to demo, you know?
Okay, so to make sure you don't like, you know, and I appreciate you, you know, demolishing, I definitely do, you know, to clean it out, but to make sure that you don't get like halfway through, especially with the building materials and, you know, kind of what we've been discussing all night tonight, that you don't get halfway through, and all of a sudden you're left with a halfway finished structure that you just can't finish. And that would be, you know, it'd be bad for you to have a house that you can't live in.
That's right, yeah.
But it'd also be bad for your neighbors to have to live with that. So I just want to make sure that, you know, you've got a plan for this.
And I hope, I hope we can finish it.
Two months. Two months, two or three months. I'd say nine and eight.
Did I hear?
Yeah.
Right, well, it's still, the motion, the motion is only thirty days.
Those are two steps.
We're not blocking you into a-
We're not-
That's right. It was just, it was just a curiosity question about how long you thought it might take.
All right.
Okay, so motion of second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried. All right, thank you very much, gentlemen, we appreciate you being here this evening. Under visitors petitions, this is the second item that was the reason we amended the agenda this evening, a request from New South Construction in Coweta County for temporary noise order variance for pouring concrete for the jail expansion on December the sixth, with weather delay date of the ninth, maybe?
The ninth, that is correct.
At, at the jail on- Um, at, uh, at the jail on Grayson Trail. Uh, you've seen us do this, uh, with Newton High School. Uh, this is a continuous pour situation, I would assume, uh, that they have to do. So is there a motion, uh, to grant the temporary noise order variance?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, we grant the variance. Any discussion for those two days?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Um, like the last one, I think it was Councilwoman Jenkins brought up about putting out signs or noise is gonna be past certain hours. Can we notify nearby residents, uh, something of this, to let them know that this is gonna be going on?
We're certainly gonna ask the contractor in Kaweeta County, uh, to do that since it's, since it's a fraud. I mean, I think we have, I have a representative in New South back there, so-
Something I also asked them about was, something I also asked them about was being able to use a different, um, sound at night, considering you don't have the same amount of ambient noise and to make sure, of course, I know OSHA wants you to have that, that, um, uh- Yeah. Right.